All right, great. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for October 6th, 2020. Before we go into our agenda, I'd like to request, actually I can't because I was going to request an agenda change or addition for an emergency approval on some services, but without Jeremy or Audra here, we're not going to be able to do that because I don't have all the details.
Are they not available tonight?
Audra is indisposed at the moment. She may be here later, but she's got some issues at home that she's dealing with. By the way, Jenna wouldn't be here tonight also, but.
Here comes Jeremy.
Oh, good.
I'm letting him in now. Yep.
Perfect. Thanks. What timing.
Janice to the rescue.
Jeremy, can you hear us? Jeremy, you muted?
Yep, he is.
You want me to be muted?
No, muted. No, thank you. No, thanks for showing up. I needed you. I was just proposing before we started our agenda that we were requested to consider, the Select Board's requested to consider the addition of an agenda item for some very short-term needed services for inspection. Is that correct? And if you could please describe that so we could, the Select Board can take action or not.
Sure. Thank you. So I'm not sure if everyone knows yet, but Steve Wilson, our Code Enforcement and Plumbing Inspector, is leaving the Town of Camden. Actually, next Wednesday will be his last day. And so it kind of puts us into a little bit of a jam trying to hire someone. We had two weeks notice on this. So trying to hire someone. I have been working around the clock trying to figure out how to best move this forward while we have the position open. We also want to be cognizant of a future employee having to give, you know, appropriate notice to their current employer so that they can appropriately plan for their future too. Finding code officials and plumbing inspectors is not an easy thing, I will say. There are not many of them. There are not many good ones out there. But I have, there's a plumbing inspector that I'd like you to at least appoint on an interim basis as our LPI and subsurface wastewater inspections. So they would, she would actually inspect septic systems and all plumbing, internal plumbing work in town. And we were planning, I've been working with her, her name is Monique, Monique, her name, she goes by Mo Dubay or Dubey Forten. She is a plumbing inspector for South Thomaston. Her father was a partner in Pat Jackson and Tri-City Waste and Septic. She is pretty dynamic. She is into the wastewater field and she knows it quite well.
Jeremy, Jeremy, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
What to do is, is just explain why we need, we can discuss all the details of.
Okay, sure.
If the Select Board agrees to put it on the agenda, but could just.
Then we'll get there.
Briefly, what the reason is for the urgency to make this change to Select.
Sure. We are required to have a licensed plumbing inspector on staff and they are required to issue the permits as well as inspect the work. Because Steve leaves, that means the work's still there and we are still doing plumbing work and septic work inspections. So we do need to have someone on staff that is, that can do that work. And that's what this is about, Bob.
Okay. And, okay, so.
The plan is, the plan is for this to be a short-term period until we can hire a CEO, LPI, that is all packaged in one person.
Okay, with that said, could I get.
Bob, I make, I make a motion that we add the temporary employment to the Select Board for Plumbing Inspector to the Select Board agenda.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Obviously with the agenda added, it takes two thirds, so roll call vote. Allison?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob, unanimous. Thank you. We will add to the agenda. Well, right after consent agenda, Jeremy will pick that one up.
That's fine. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you. With that, I'd like to open our agenda. We do have, the first item, of course, is public input on non-agenda items. And we do have one letter that's been requested from Robert Williams regarding the Seven Willow Street property, which as you probably know is coincidentally on the agenda this evening. But he requested that the following message be read into the record this evening. And the message is follows, and he is, quote, "What is the status of Seven Willow Street? I live across the street and I am concerned because the house has been abandoned for nearly 10 years. I believe the town has required ownership due to the failure of the owner to pay taxes. Is there a plan to dispose of the property? I spoke recently to Mr. Seibel about the giant maple near the road because as it split open, it should fall, if it should fall, it will take out power and cable for the surrounding area. The property has been left to deteriorate and its disposition must be addressed." Since the other, Robert Williams, 10 Willow Street, again, the relevant to record will be discussing this exact topic later on in our agenda. With that, I would move to approval or comments on the minutes for, from September 15th, 2020. Any comments? Allison?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things on the updates part. Item E said McKellar Group has gotten some experts to look at the equipment. It just, that is confusing with no context. It looks like, I assume it was about the skateboard, skate park. And then, so just maybe either take that out or have some kind of reference to the skate park. And then, the yacht club lease agreement portion, I don't have revised language ready to go, but since it focused on some things and not others in that discussion, I was a little concerned about it being interpreted as like, those are the facts of the lease and we've all agreed. There was, there's no mention of the fact that we expressed a little bit of concern about it not having gone to town meeting. I guess anytime we focus on certain facts in a conversation but not others, it just, I don't know if that caught anybody else as a little bit of a one-sided.
Yeah, I guess you have to be careful. I agree with you, Allison. Maybe if we take a, take a second look at that paragraph before we approve these minutes because that may be more substantive than a quick comment or two. And we could, I think we should table the approval of these minutes until, well frankly, I needed to pay more attention to it and I didn't. So if that's okay, I think we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a small thing, but just in terms of like, this is the record that we agree to as opposed to the record is the conversation that's on YouTube. I would rather.
I think that there needs to be a note that more discussion will follow.
Yeah, that's my, that was, that was, I was thinking, that's what I thought Allison saying, and I agree, when there was no fait accompli at that meeting that it was black, white, or yellow. We were, we were in the gray zone and we were trying to do homework and we were trying to clarify. And I think that maybe you leave some words, maybe that's not clear. And I think it's important to make that clear in the record. So I think rather than words missed here, let's just table these minutes and bring them up next time if we have a chance to, to roll over it. I'll do that also.
Yeah, I'll move that we table the minutes from September 15th, 2020.
Second.
Roll call, Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I also, thank you very much. That's a good idea. On the consent agenda tonight, we have five items. They are consideration of renewal of Vittler license and lodging license for Captain Swift Inn and Peter Otz, consideration of the application for a taxicab business license and taxicab operators for Susan Kraft and Richard Kraft doing business as Craft Delivery Service, confirmation of the designation of the registrar or voter's office hours for the upcoming November 3rd, 2020 special town meeting, fourth, confirmation of the town clerk's appointment of Peter Gross as election warden for the special town meeting to be held on November 3rd, 2020. And lastly, we have the applications for three drain layer plumbers. They are Timothy Hall, Seacoast, Richard Nash, Nash Plumbing, and Michael Eaton of Brookside Plumbing. Are there any comments or concerns with any of these five items on the consent agenda? Mark?
I do have something I want to mention. I don't know that you should hold it up. I did notice that for the application for Susan Kraft for the taxicab business license, it appears from her application that her driver's license had expired, I believe in March, and was not, and was not redone until September, October, sometime in there. And that means that it looks like they've been conducting that delivery business, unlicensed situation. Now, obviously, it's been corrected. There is insurance there, but I just wanted to make a note about that, that, you know, people in this business need to be more attentive to licensing and things like that. That concerned me a little bit.
Janice?
The reason is because of COVID, you couldn't renew their driver's license.
Ah, okay. That makes more sense then. Okay, never mind.
So there, thank, good, good, good catch though, Mark. Are there any objections to these five items on the consent agenda? Not hearing any, they are hereby approved.
I can't believe you read so carefully, Mark. That's amazing.
No, Mark, I'm impressed. I really am.
A former police officer, I know, noticing things like that.
You didn't notice that my license was expired by one day, Mark. But anyway.
Well, off, off to the slammer for you, Bob. There's no, you're, you're, you're a town executive.
Right. Onto next item, which is public hearings on three liquor licenses. And normal procedure, of course, is to explain to everybody the reason why we have a public hearing is to request public input for the Select Board's benefit on the items that are at hand. Since we have received no public input, given our current procedure on any of these, I will both the public hearing portion, a public comment portion of the public hearing revert solely to Select Board deliberation. Now, if there, since there are three, we can do them individually. If anybody has any comments on any one of the three, or we can take them collectively. I leave that to the option of the Select Board.
I'll make a motion that we approve all three applications for renewal liquor license. Peter Otz on the water at 16 Bayview Landing, Captain Swift Inn at 73 Elm Street, Brandon Harbor Inn at 14 Bayview Landing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments? Roll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Bob, aye, four zero. Thank you. Now going back to the one I jumped right past, which was the new, the added agenda item, Jeremy, regarding the inspection services. So again, would you just give us a brief summary of what you're requesting of the board and who are the individuals?
Sure. As I laid out earlier, Steve Wilson's leaving and we need to have in place under state law, a licensed plumbing, local plumbing inspector that is licensed and certified to do interior plumbing as well as subsurface wastewater inspections. Those, those permanent applications keep coming in every day for plumbing work and we need to have someone be able to do that work. I have looked very hard around the mid-coast for someone to do that work and found somebody in South Thomaston. Her name is Monique Dubay Forten. She is a licensed plumbing inspector. She is a licensed and certified subsurface wastewater inspector. She sits on the education committee, just as this is a side note of the wastewater environment. Federation organization in the state domain. She's a pretty dynamic young qualification. She's certified. Steve, Steve has talked to other plumbing inspector or plumbers in town and, and everyone seems to like her. So I think it's going to be a good fit. The plan is to hire her as a contract, independent contractor for a period of, until we can fill the position permanently. So she is also a certified code official as well. She does that in South Thomaston as well as plumbing. But we're just going to hire her, again, on a, the plan is to hire on a contract basis to do this work while, before we hire a new plumbing inspector, CEO.
Just to be clear, in hiring this person, are we talking about a retainer or an hourly basis? What's the basis of remuneration?
Yeah, it's on an hourly rate, Bob, and we have the funds available for it. We're not paying for, you know, it's an hourly rate from when she starts to work. Sometimes she'll be working out of South Thomaston, coming up to do the plumbing inspection. She says she can, tends to get to the, each inspection within 24 hours' notice. That's pretty good. So it is a contract hourly rate.
Okay. Mark?
I'll make a motion that we approve hiring the designated person on a temporary basis to fill our plumbing inspection need.
Second. Taylor seconded. Discussion. Allison?
Is this the only inspector that we're required, legally required to have as a plumbing inspector? Or?
No, by no means. No, not at all. So we are required to have a code officer to do land use, zoning, shoreline zoning, those kinds of things. We also have to, have to have a code, code enforcement officer to do building plan reviews and inspections and permits. We are correct. I could do most of that. Plan reviews is a real specialty, I will say, especially when it comes to commercial projects. So likely, I'd be coming to, probably on the meeting on October 20th, to ask you something similar for someone to assist the town doing plan reviews until we can hire some, a new person can actually come to work for us permanently. So that will be my plan. No, we are required to have a plumbing inspector, a CEO to do shoreline zoning, land use, legal issues, and building, energy, all that stuff.
Okay.
Answer your.
Yes. It's great to see a woman doing this.
Yeah, there's quite a few, actually. Jeremy, what about electrical structure? Are we going to hire that out or are we going to, how are we going to do that part of code enforcement?
So I think right now, based on, I've looked at what Steve's been working on and the projects that are underway that we have right now. The plan is that, again, I think we can get to, remember, we have an agreement with Belfast to assist us from time to time. Steve is actually going to Belfast to work, so I will be possibly looking at Steve to do some of this, but I think between myself and the fire inspectors who have some certifications and a plan reviewer that I'll probably bring to you on the 20th, I think we'll be in a good position, Bob, to get us through mid-November.
Great. Any other comments, questions? Okay, roll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye. Did we make a motion? Did somebody make a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Seconded though?
Yes.
Yeah, he seconded. Don't confuse me. The, so Allison, aye. Taylor is aye. Mark?
Aye.
Wow, aye also. Thank you, four zero. Thank you for that consideration for that item. As we go into action items, there are, I'm going to just change the order just a little bit because two of these involve Dave St. Laurent and I want to try to get his time done upfront. One of the, one of the items I wanted to, the Select Board to consider was moving the proposal from Knowles to repair Masonry and Opera House Building facade up to the first action item because, Dave, unless I'm wrong, we really have, we have a proposal from them. It's an action we need to take for repair of the building this winter. Perhaps you've been, unless I have any disagreement, I'd like to bring it up to action on the action list. Dave, do you want to give us a summary of that one?
Yeah, sure, Bob. So as everyone's aware, we're working on the Opera House and the original plan was to repoint the Washington Street side of the building and fix a few of the problematic areas that were visible around the gutter line. In conjunction with that project, we're also replacing the gutters. So when we started removing the gutters, we found quickly that the top, probably six courses of brick, five feet deep, were deteriorated significantly due to the fact that the gutters were no longer functional and water was working their way behind them and getting into the brickwork. So once the gutters were pulled away, we saw that we had a much larger project on our hands than just the repointing of the front. So the scope of the job changed from the repointing of one side of the building to the complete restoration and rebuilding of all of the corbel work and five brick, five rows of brick down and about five feet deep in some sections. What, so where we're at, as we were redoing the repointing and the repair and going all the way around the building, we, we noticed that it seems like the building has been repointed. I mean, I couldn't even count how many times in, in the history that that building has probably been spot repointed and repaired. But when it was repointed, it was never actually ground into the brickwork. So they take the brick and they'll either chip out, you know, three inches of mortar, two to three inches of mortar, or they'll grind it out and they'll put that mortar back in. And that, that, you know, is a complete repointing of the brick. What's happened in the past is it was a bad spot, a mason came in and the mortar had kind of deteriorated and they just kind of filled it in. They didn't take the old stuff out. So when we were going and when we were doing, when the masons were grinding into the brickwork, we noticed the front side of the building looked like it was probably the part of the building that's had the least amount of attention, probably due to the activity on, on that side of the building. And when they started grinding into that brick, it was just dust. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that side of the building has the highest priority of, in need of repointing. So Knowles came to us and said, you know, if you're going to prioritize which side you do, I would do this front part. And I can also try, we can give you a better price if you'd like to do this this winter. And we can tent it all in because they have less work going on at that time. So I said, sure, give me a quote because I know that that was something we were planning on doing anyway. And I presented it to the Select Board for their consideration. Another part of it is the timing of that work during the busy part of the year. And everyone can probably see that it's super difficult to do that work off of Route 1. And it would be much better to do in a slower part of the year. So those are the, kind of the reasons why we're looking at trying to get that work done on the front and if the Select Board would like to move forward with that.
What is the proposal summary, Dave?
Basically, it's a repointing, complete repointing of the front side of the building of the Opera House.
Dollar value?
Hold on.
$68,345.
Thank you.
Say again, Mark?
$68,345.
Okay.
I would move that we go ahead and approve the funding of this portion of the Opera House repointing in the amount specified.
Second, and then I guess I have a question, but it's an Audra question.
Yeah, I know, I know what the question you're going to ask is, because you should be part of the motion is where it comes from.
Yeah, so, yeah, where, I guess I'll second, but do you want?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Is, yeah, obviously it's not in the budget, so.
Correct.
Do we, I know we have a considerable amount in Select Board contingency, you know, obviously prefer not to touch it, but.
I think Allison has.
I'm sorry, I could have made that a second part. In discussing this with Audra before, what she seemed to think was best was to spend from the Opera House reserve and put that, that would put that account in the negative. But it's maybe a better accounting way of doing it rather than spending from contingency. And then when we do, we'll, we're planning on replenishing that reserve fund anyway in the FY '22 budget. So I would, I would tend to think that we should go with Audra's suggestion.
Right. Would you amend your motion then and include that information, Allison?
I would move that we approve the additional funding for the Opera House repointing to be done by Knowles over the winter and that it be funded from the Opera House Maintenance Reserve Fund.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other comments? Roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Bob, four zero. Thank you very much. Number, next point, we'll go back onto the item 6A, which is the discussion on the striping plan of Mechanic Street. Dave, would you like to take the lead in this one?
Sure. So I noticed on the agenda, it says approval of the Bicycle Coalition of Mainz recommendation on Mechanic Street. And I think that we have to step back and look at what the request was from the Select Board. And it was for myself and several other people to develop a multidisciplinary group to look at Mechanic Street holistically and come up with a proposal for restriping or some suggestions on how to help with traffic calming on Mechanic Street. So I think that the way the, the agenda is probably worded is, and that's my fault, I should have caught that earlier, probably should have been maybe tweaked a little bit. It's not really so much approval of the Bicycle Coalition of Mainz recommendation on the striping plan as much as it's a recommendation from the group that was requested by the Select Board. That, I'd like to make that recommendation upfront. So the second thing is, I want to thank all of the people that were on that group, especially Jim, because I've asked Jim to be part of this and I'm the one that reached out to Jim to do this work. And as we all know, when you start on, on a journey, sometimes it doesn't always end up where you want it to be. And, but at least it's part of the journey and it gets you closer to where you started out, you know, going. That being said, Jim, Jim kind of put together a proposal and that ended up being in the packet. And I, after looking at it, I, I didn't feel it really quite represented what, what we kind of probably came up with in the end. And that was a difficult thing only because it wasn't really set in stone exactly what we were going to do. But what I tried to do is give an alternative to that, which I'm going to share my screen and I'm going to go through. And I basically took Jim's illustration and I incorporated some of the recommendations from everybody. I mean, we, we talked about all kinds of different things. We talked about many different options and alternatives. I think what I'm going to show you was probably the closest that we all kind of came to agreeing upon. I think that we, maybe some of us wanted other things, but I think that this is ultimately where we ended up. And also, there was some incorporation of some suggestions from the Pathways.
Dave, do you mind telling us, everybody that was on the group, before you jump into that, just to recap that, please?
Say that again, Taylor, please.
Can you tell us again, everybody that was involved in that group?
Sure. I have it on the slide, so when I share that, I'll go through that with you.
Thank you.
Okay, you got it. So can I share my screen?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so.
Just be kind.
So here's, Jim, please forgive me for taking your document and changing it. So I turned it into, this is a Town of Camden's document now. It's not the Bicycle Coalition of Mainz document. But I did use your illustrations and changed it just a slight bit. So this is a potential shoulder in shared lane treatments for Mechanic Street, Camden, Maine. The images, keep in mind, are depicted from east to west. And this was part of the Mechanic Street view by Angela King, Jim Tassie, Bicycle Coalition of Maine, Dave St. Laurent from Camden Public Works, Jeff Scott from Pathways, David Allen, and Patrick Adams from MDOT. And I think that's everybody. If I left somebody out, please let me know. So it's, it, we, what we kind of came up with was a solid shoulder line with some shared lane markings. And conceptual drawing shows. Um, and conceptual drawing shows, um, a land to create a shoulder in the road without needing, without the need, total need for a center line. That kinda changed a little bit from a follow-up Pathways meeting, a request for the center line, several locations, and the illustration will show that, that I'm gonna go into on the next slide. Um, the, 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 um, the travel lanes maintain a ten-foot travel lane and when the shoulder is less than three feet, share lane markings or sharrows will be painted in the roadway. Um, the recommendation can in, consider, consideration of a center line stripe at intersections in hills clarify that the road is still too big. So, show the next, the very first slide here, I'll go to the next slide. Um, what I did was I took Jim's illustration and I kinda, I noticed it was, it was, it's, it's kinda hard to follow. So, I, for, for aid of following, I numbered the slides for us to follow in the bottom right-hand corner. And you just remember that this is going from basically Main Street to, um, John Street, okay? So, we're starting from Main Street at the bottom right-hand corner and we're, and we're gonna move up. So, the bottom portion of this slide shows, um, and you can see that, as I mentioned before, where we didn't have three feet of shoulder, where we had parking interference, um, we didn't put a fog line and we put shared lane markings. So, you can see that down on the newly section, newly paved section of Mechanic Street, um, as, as Washington Street moving up. And then you get all the way to Dalton Street and that's where that treatment stops, okay? So, no, no shoulder line, just sharrows saying, hey motorists, you need to share the road with bicyclists. So, then you go from Dalton Street, moving towards John Street, we pick up the, um, pick up the fog line and that's where we can maintain three feet of shoulder, um, for bicyclists or pedestrians. Going on to the next slide, again, I'll start at the bottom, slide three, and I've marked off the street so that it's a little easier to follow. As we're coming up the hill, now we're starting to lose that three feet of shoulder and we're also approaching that area of concern on the hill. So, what we've done is we, we've put in the share, the shared lane markings and we put the center line, yellow center line, double yellow, to let people know that, you know, you shouldn't be passing on this hill if, uh, somebody's on the bike driving up the road, uh, you shouldn't blindly try and pass that person. Um, as you come out of that area up and over the hill, you get to an area again now where we can maintain the three feet of shoulder and we have the, um, fog line with the ten-foot travel lanes. And you go to slide four, right over here, same situation, continue up, you're at Park Street, you have the fog lines, three feet of shoulder, going by Rossin Avenue. Go to the next section, now you're, now you're, um, approaching Oak Street, same thing, maintaining, um, the fog line, ten-foot travel lane. Now you're coming, um, heading towards Cobb Road in the hill and another dangerous area, so we drop the, drop the, uh, fog line, because we can't maintain the, uh, three feet of shoulder in that area. Put in the sharro and then put in the double yellow, signifying that this is a dangerous area, don't be passing here. And as we approach up and over the hill, where we have line of sight again and can maintain that three feet of shoulder, um, we have the fog line again. Um, now we're going past, heading towards Simmington, um, fog line, ten feet of travel lane. And we go to the next slide up over here, um, we lose, the road narrows, we lose that three foot shoulder, we drop the fog line, put the sharro in, get to the intersection of John Street where, you know, it's narrow, put the double yellow and the sharro. So, that is where I kinda felt we landed, um, in terms of trying to maintain, um, a safe place for bicyclists, bicyclists to use, but at the same time, trying to maintain a travel lane that was safe from motor vehicles, but narrowing it up a little bit to try and create some traffic calming at the same time. This may not be exactly the perfect case scenario for everybody, um, but I feel it's a good compromise moving in the direction of trying to try something different, do a little traffic calming. Um, so, that being said, this is what, this is what I'm proposing. Um, um, I guess, uh, I'll leave it, open the.
I have several questions.
Dave?
Discussion.
Just to be clear for everybody, when you say ten-foot travel lanes, you're really talking about twenty feet between the two fog lines, is that correct?
That's correct, and, uh, twenty-one where there'd be a double yellow, only because you're losing a, you're losing a foot of the.
Okay. Um, Taylor, you have questions?
Uh, yeah, uh, a few questions, I'll try to be concise. Um, what, Dave, can you, um, um, explain maybe just briefly what the major differences are between the changes that you made and what we, what was in the packet?
Yes. So, if you bring up, um, if you, if you look at your packet, um, there was a reduced travel lane suggested and, let's see. Um, it was really more, the biggest change was the, the travel lane width.
Okay.
Yeah.
You mean wider or more narrow?
Well, in the first page, the, the summary, it says that the, um, nominal five to six-foot lanes, which would be the width, and Dave is talking about something closer to three is what I heard.
Right.
And the center lane varies from ten to eighteen fit, feet. And Dave is talking about, um, uh, a twenty, nominal.
Okay, um.
It, it, it's really the difference between maintaining a five and six-foot shoulder and a, and a eight, or a eight, uh, ten-foot travel lane. Um, you're just, you're, my proposal is widening the travel lane and narrowing the shoulder a little bit. And the other proposal was widening the shoulder and narrowing the travel lane.
Is there, um, that explains it, I'm sure, people, a lot of people might have questions, but I wanna ask my others while I'm thinking about it.
Sure, sure.
Specifically between Main Street and, um, Washington Street, um, or even between Main Street and Dalton Street, but particularly in that area in the summertime, there is, it's, it's, it's chaos essentially, with pedestrians, um, regular traffic. And then often throughout the day, large delivery trucks that tend to park halfway on the sidewalk in that center island, um, really because they have nowhere else to go. And it all seems to work fluidly because people are used to that. Um, so I'm just curious if discussion about that area and how those groups worked together came up as you guys were deliberating what to do.
Well, that, that area is pretty simple because you just can't have a, a bike lane in that area. So, the treatment is put a sharro in there, um, let the motorists know that bicyclists are, are, are using this road as, you know, as they're rightfully can, their motor vehicle, their vehicles do. And it's just an awareness thing and makes people conscious that, you know, bikes can be in this roadway. Um, it's, it's bringing more attention to, um, bicycle safety. Um, we're also gonna have some signage up that's gonna, um, you know, let motorists know that bikes can be in the road. And, um, it's not really changing anything in that section, it's just bringing awareness to the fact that bicyclists use this section of road and can be in the road, which isn't changing anything, they have that right already. This is just an awareness thing. It doesn't change the flow, it doesn't change really, I, I mean, I did it, I did it on the loop in Rockland, on Union Street and Main Street. And I really, you know, I got a few phone calls about people saying, what do you mean, bicyclists can be in the road? You know, they just don't know that it's, it's state law that they're, you know, that they're allowed to do that. So, it doesn't really change anything, Taylor, in that section.
So, I guess my final question then is, it's a good segue, the sharrows, as I think you, uh, called them, how do people know what they mean? Is it signs or is there markings in the sharrows themselves?
There's, there's a, there's a bicyclist, there's a bicycle icon inside the sharro itself with the chevron, um, making it appear that, you know, that, well, it just gives the, the impression that bicycles can use that section of road, even though they can use all sections of road. It just is bringing awareness and, and this is also something that Jim said he'd help me with is, is, you know, the education piece of making motorists aware that bicyclists can be in the roadway and use the road also.
That makes sense. Other questions from the board? Allison, Mark, any questions?
Um, I'm, I'm curious about the shared lane markings as well as Taylor was. Um, how, uh, I've never seen them before. I'm just curious how, uh, nationwide, how, how exposed are they? How familiar are they? And what do we do to make people familiar with them instead of just painting them on the street?
Well, I think we, I think we need to, um, have some outreach. Um, we, we had our, um, pedestrian safety forum where we actually talked about this, which we're scheduling the follow-up meeting that kinda got all messed up from the COVID issue. Um, that was, uh, that was one outreach effort. Um, BCM is, is gonna help us with some of that. Um, and there's signage, um, we could put up posters, there's different things of that nature that we can do. Um, we can also, um, there's also advertisement on TV explaining it. Um, it's all your expected routes of media, I think, is, it's just something we need to step up and, and include and, um, build on, I think.
Go ahead, um, Jim, Jim Tassie, did you hand up, if you wanted to comment on this educational process?
Yeah, well, I wanted to comment on, um.
Stop sharing your screen so that we can see, go back to the view where we can see everyone.
Sure.
Thanks.
And I'm gonna actually ask permission to share my screen, because I have an image of a shared lane marking, uh, a sharro to show you, so you can see exactly what it is. These are very commonly used around the country, they're very commonly used in Maine.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Jimmy, you, you broke up for a second, go ahead, please.
Um, I'm saying, the, uh, the share, I, I, well, I was gonna request to, uh, have permission to share my screen briefly, I can show you an image of shared lane marking.
Sure.
AKA a sharro. And, um, I wanted to just say that these are, um, they're very commonly used, uh, around the country, uh, and in Maine, they're all, we, we've been actually painting them a lot this fall, we just actually did a whole series of, uh, shared lane markings in the roadway in North Yarmouth. And that's the image I'm gonna show you right now, right here. So, you can all see that image, I hope, this is done, uh, um, just using, uh.
Yep.
Yep. So, a, as Dave said, you get an image of a bicycle with two chevrons, you can see another one up here. Uh, these are located in a fairly narrow roadway, so they're, they're just centered right in the travel lane. Um, and, uh, a, as Dave said, they, they really provide, um, both, uh, you know, an alert to drivers that bicycles might be on the road, but they also provide a suggestion as to positioning for bicycles as well. In this case, the sharro is showing that people need to actually move into the center of the lane to get, um, through this crosswalk where there's a little curb extension that, that prevents the bicycle from being hard against the edge of the road.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jim, thank you very much, good picture. Could you unshare the screen? Thank you. Um, I think that, just your great questions, I think we have time for education and education is always important. I mean, you've gotta make people understand, uh, I think a lot, we, that anybody that rides a bike or goes gets around much, will recognize these, but a lot of people won't. And we just need to do, that, we've gotta understand, we need to do an education process and inform the public what these things are about. Good questions. Other questions? Allison?
If I could respond to the education thing, Bob?
Uh, one's Allison's first.
Oh, no, let Jeff, Jeff should say everything and then I'll say anything, I think.
All right, Jeff.
I just wanted to let the, uh, board know that I've been in touch with, uh, the city of Ottawa and, uh, because they've been, done a lot of work on this education aspect. And, uh, they have sent me their video original work and given permission for us to use that video and make it, uh, make it Camden rather than Ottawa. Uh, and they have great copy on their website, so they've set up a, a section on the webpage that is for education and they point to it all over the place, um, in their, when they're doing their outreach. And, uh, I'd like, I'd like to have the Pathways Committee continue to work with the town on maybe, uh, expanding that page, I don't know what the process is, that's all I wanted to do.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you very much. Allison?
What, did you say Allison?
Yes, I did say Allison.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it's, we've done so much talking about experimental, um, approaches, it's good for everybody just to know that this is none of that. I mean, it's taken away every, every bit of kind of the, the experimental innovative treatment aspect of this. So, it's almost, um, I think the conversation has been useful, um, and, and good for everybody, but this is really something that should maybe not even need to come to the select board, it's just the normal road treatment in, like, the boilerplate approach, um, in most places. So, that's okay, and we have data on how, um, fast people were going before, and it'll be interesting to see if this alone, um, can make a difference. Um, but it's not like, even, you know, painting a bunch of sharrows in the road, even if it doesn't, people are confused and don't know what that is, there's no added risk to that because bikes are already allowed in the road. And the only thing I'm a little bit concerned about is the fact that we're only putting the sharrows in these places where, um, the shoulder can't be three feet, because I think, um, it could, there are a lot of places where you might have three feet of shoulder, but a, a cyclist that wants to move at a, at a good rate of speed is probably gonna wanna be in the road anyway, because you've got all these storm drains that are these, you know, major divots and, and for me, I'm a very cautious, nervous bike rider with my kids, so I'm going slow and I, you know, stay to the right as much as possible and go over those storm drain divots, but other people might not want to. And when you have only the sharrows in certain places, um, my concern is that sort of like rage of people thinking, oh, they're not allowed in these areas. But we can always add more sharrows later, um.
Yep. One step at a time, I would agree. But I agree with Allison also, uh, Dave, this is, um, and she mentioned it earlier too, and I have to agree, um, we're not exactly in uncharted territory here. Um, uh, so I think that your plan, from my perspective, is solid, um, I'm always concerned, but the balance is not ideal for anybody and that's good then. Um, I think the, um, the, um, the, I think that it's very important to have the twenty feet for the, um, for the drivers as it, as we, as today, because, you know, that's give two ten-foot lanes, I, just for reference, a, a parking space is what, nine feet, Dave? Is that right?
Uh, well, eight, Bob.
Eight, okay, eight, so it's, you know, just a couple of feet bigger, one foot on each side of the car, but anyhow, Mark hit his hand up, go ahead, Mark.
I, I was gonna say, I like Dave's plan, um, I've had, I'd had conversations since the last meeting with Dave about this, with Bob about this, where we discussed a lot of the things I think this new plan solves, um, particularly the curves in the road and the hills where it could get dangerous if people didn't understand the road thing. So, I think this is a good solution. Um, I am a bike rider, I tend to ride up Barnstown Road, um, you know, so someday it'd be nice to have some, some further markings there. Um, but I think anything that makes people just more aware and, uh, because the bikes are already there, it, it's not gonna change that, but it just makes people more aware. I think that's, it's a safety issue, I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Mark. Um, with that said, I think, um, I've not hearing any objections, major objections to your plan, Dave. Um, like I said, uh, let's get it done. And wanna thank Jim, thank you for all of your help, and Jeff, um, the MDOT guys who were not here. Um, I know it's not perfect, but, you know, we'll, like, uh, Allison mentioned earlier, we can always tweak it as we go forward. Allison, you have another comment?
Just one final thing, just to clarify about the, um, double yellow lines and whether there is or is not a requirement for that, um. I ride my bike frequently on, in those areas that have been sort of deemed areas of concern or whatever. I don't, I don't like the idea at all of taking up another foot in the middle of the road and kind of pushing cars to the edge. Is there, where, was the, was the double yellow line a suggestion from somebody or is that a requirement somewhere? And what?
Dave?
Scott?
It was part of the Pathways Committee meeting when we, Jeff, do you remember? Jeff, you, well-
I think Jeff maybe felt it was an MDOT requirement?
No, no, I mean, we, we, no, it was, it came up at the Pathways Committee meeting. I think it was a suggestion that it was, people felt when they're climbing the hill, motorists will, you know, just try and pass around you if there isn't some kind of warning marking there, like a double yellow, signifying that, you know, hey, don't pass on this hill when I'm, when I'm climbing the hill on my bike. That was the thought. It came up. And it actually came up in our meeting, too, when we walked the road. We talked about whether or not putting double yellow would be good or bad. And it was, it was left up to us. And then it came back up again at the Pathways.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
People aren't gonna think about it as don't pass a bike. It's gonna be like, it's like they're, don't, I'd rather, sometimes you can see there, and I would much rather a car go away from me and attempt to pass around me rather than feel like they have to stay to the left of that double yellow line and drive me off the side of the shoulder. So I guess I'm just still not totally convinced that that makes it better. I, but, I, so if it's, Jeff, I don't, I don't know if you had a-
I, this is a tough call. There, there needs to be something that designates which side of the road you need to be on unless you do the advisory lane, which is something completely different. But in my, in my experience, in my experience, the cars rarely run me off the road. They always go into the other lane. That's what they do. And then if the car is coming the other way, it's the car coming the other way that hits the brakes and slams into the shoulder. It's not the bike. It's, it's the accident that's gonna happen between the two cars is where it happens. But the speeds here are slow. They're 35, 30 miles an hour. That's what the cars are doing. And so there's reaction time, too. I don't know if we can stop them, but a double yellow line is more of a barrier than nothing.
It's more of a barrier. It's a very known barrier.
I feel like they're just gonna pass closer. Like, my kids are wobbly on their bike, and I don't want people going any closer to them than-
Well, I, I think, Dave, we still have three feet on each side with the yellow, or is it a little shorter, two and a half?
It, it comes and goes, you know, it's, it's not consistent. That's part of the issue.
But I thought it was, there was only one little, there was one little part, but most of the time, it was, there was only one small section right around.
From Simonton, too.
There's a couple spots where it narrows up. It is fairly wide where you're talking, but the problem is, is that it's, it's a blind hill. You can't-
Right, it's the blind hill.
Or it's partially-
No light sight.
I mean, I was on Route 17 today picking up trash with a truck, and we had to, there's an area where there's just nowhere to pull off. And so when cars see something in the way, they do, they, they slow down. When they see oncoming traffic, they, they slow down if they need to, I don't know. I just feel like some of this is really aimed at making sure that cars feel they can go as fast as they want. And like, you've got, when you see that double yellow line, you're like, I've got my lane, and you've got the white line on the side and the double yellow line, and it's like, you're like in a safe shoot that you can just, but right now at least it's kind of vague. But I, we can always change it, and I'm happy to try something and see if it makes it better or worse.
Allison, Chandler, you have another question?
I guess I was just gonna ask a question about, my interpretation of the blind hill with the double yellows was that the hope is, because I don't think there's a fog line there.
Not right now.
That the hope is that hopefully somebody will wait to pass until they get over the blind hill and then pass once they know that they can see.
That's right.
So for that period, they hopefully don't even pass the bicycle, but simply slow down until they get to the top of the blind hill.
That's, that's correct.
It's the only legal way for them to do it.
Right. So all that said, this is, Dave presented, but he believes it's been a recommendation of this group. We tasked to come back with a recommendation and unless we wanna send it back to the task force to redo it, they should move forward, Dave, with the plan as you crafted, and we'll keep looking at it and tweaking it. Mark?
Just one more comment. I understand what Allison's saying. Sometimes people take a yellow line as be more speed. So when we start it, I would like to see the police department put a couple of those speed signs on, in, in the areas so that it reminds people what the speed limits are and, and lets them think about, lets them see in fact how fast they're driving. I think that'd be a good start.
Measuring it right away, see how fast people really do go, if it makes it worse than-
Dave?
Definitely get more traffic data, especially in these locations. The also, the other thing I think we can do is we can give three feet signs in those locations. That will help, I think. You know, I mean, that's another awareness thing. It's telling the motorists not to, not to encroach on the bicyclist. It's another method, I think, to try and help.
All right, Dave, with that, I'd like to close the discussion on this item and move on to the next part of our agenda. But again, thank you, Jim Tassig. And Jeff Scott, good to see you again. It must be cold where you are because you have a hat on, so. Let me know if you need some heat. Anyway, thank you both, gentlemen. Dave, thank you, too, for all your efforts. And please thank MDOT for us being given a chance. Moving on to the next item, which is the discussion about a bid award for the Public Works excavator. Dave?
Yes?
That's you again.
Oh, you want me to explain this? So we budgeted a, we rent an excavator every year. Make this, make it quick. The cost of the excavator rental is, is, ends up being the same cost as of the payment for the actual excavator. But the difference is that we have the excavator year-round versus for a four-month period. So the wastewater treatment facility and our, the Public Works Department, we're splitting the cost of the capital on the excavator. Received, I think, five bids. The low bid was a Caterpillar. It, it was inspected and looked over by the operators and myself. And it was actually a good machine, and we felt that was recommended going with that one.
So you're asking the Milton Cat at $101,900 is the one you're recommending?
That's correct. I mean, the price, we haven't got the exact bottom-line price because there was a, an implement that we were double plumbing the thumb and the twist wrist, and we will be adding that in. And, but we budgeted $120,000 for that machine, so it's well under what we had budgeted. Even, even with, even with the extra plumbing on it.
I, I have one question, but you said that the payment for purchasing would, would be identical to the payment for, for renting.
Pretty close, pretty close to it annually. Yep.
Annually, because I was gonna say, because you're only renting for four months a year. But if that's the case, this is a no-brainer then.
That's what I, that's what I figured. It was pretty much a no-brainer. Yep.
That sounds great. Then it's our equipment.
Chandler?
What about maintenance issues, expense over the years?
Seven-year warranty on this machine. So we, that's a full warranty for seven years. It was a very good extended warranty that was included in the purchase price. And, I mean, there's not a lot of maintenance on a piece of equipment like this. I, I don't, I don't foresee it being a huge capital expense down the road.
Okay.
As long, as long as we take care of it and maintain it.
And, and last question. Seven-year guarantee, how long would the payments go for and how long is the life of the machine?
Oh, jeez. Life of the machine will be well over 20 years, probably, probably closer to 25, 30 years, I would think, the way we use it. And the payments, I don't have that, the answer to that. Jody has to do the financing on that. Yep.
But we still would make out, it would save us money in the long term quite substantially, it sounds like.
I think so.
Okay.
Chandler?
Dave, is the, the four-month lease that we have been doing, is that the excavator for, like, the downtown winter snow removal?
No, it's, it's the, it's the unit that we use for culverts, fixing the structures on the road, for digging, for putting up winter sand, any kind of, any kind of digging activity for the most part. We have a backhoe, but the excavator is a little more versatile. It also has a blade on it, a float, that floats, so you can, you can move material with the blade. It's got rubber tracks. It's a really good machine.
Okay. Bob, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for Milton Cat for what now is the price of $101,900 without the additional items that, that Dave mentioned.
Second. Motion made in second. Comments? Roll call. Well, Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Bob, I, 4-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave. I think your duty is almost over.
Thank you for taking me out of order. I really appreciate it.
We try and do what we can do. On the agenda next, let me just, let me double-check one second here. I've got too many windows open. I believe we have the discussion on the, I'm sorry, the action on issuing a, an RFI, Request for Information, for Sagamore Farm. And in our packet, I know we have a draft of that. Jeremy, do you want to explain that?
Sure. As, as you know, the town has Sagamore Farm property, 77-acre piece of property that CDAC and the Select Board have talked about on again and off again over many years. We also, it also is the location of some mountain bike trails that were established there a number of years ago. It is also the location of the town solar farm. There, you guys have, you know, asked me to kind of pursue some potential uses for that property. We have been, I have been in contact with a handful of entities that are looking at it or have some, expressed some interest. One entity has expressed a lot of interest as in doing a fair amount of due diligence on the property right now. And I think, you know, rather than issuing a full request for proposals on what to do with that property, kind of a, a more, I think, all-inclusive and a way to entertain some kind of creative input on, you know, what people would have would be to issue what's called a request for interest or expression of interest or request for information, similar to an RFQ, RFP, but much less, you know, much less oomph to it, and just kind of asking people to, you know, submit some proposals to the town. And it's about time, I think, we do that. And so I know this is on the agenda, so I drafted, again, it's a very simple request for information, kind of laying out what the property is, what the zoning is, and what some of the current conditions or uses that are on the property that probably will need to continue moving forward, i.e. the bike tra, the mountain bike trails and recreational trails. I think it's a valued, you know, community resource, and it's adjacent to the state park. And if a developer can take advantage of that and have that as a benefit, and we can be ensured that we have public access and public easement moving forward, that's a good thing. So that's what this is, and I would like to submit it, get it out there, publish it, and see what we get. Again, I have met with a handful of entities that have expressed interest. Again, one is well into it, and they're eager to submit something. This way, it gets out there and gets a kind of a broader reach, and that's what that is. That's what I'm asking you to do tonight.
Allison?
I'm sorry if I missed this in the packet. And is the, is the survey that we requested, is that part, was that part of our packet? Do we have that?
No, you don't actually. Gartley Dorsky has been very, 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 very busy. And I did get an email from Jim Dorsky two weeks ago, and he said the survey work is, for the most part, done. They had to do two areas on the property. They had to look a little more, into a little more and place some markers. And once that's done, he estimated it would be a week or so, and that was two weeks ago. And I just haven't reached out to him to see if it was done. So I'm assuming that it's done, because he said two weeks ago it'd be done in a week.
I see.
Mark? I think it's a very good document, Jeremy. The one question I was thinking about, one thing that I've always heard is the road is particularly tricky situation. Does the, the party that we've been talking to that's done more due diligence, are they aware of that and found, figured out a way to deal with it? Or is that part of the survey to know what to do with it? I'm sort of curious where the road sits in this situation.
Okay, so as, as you see in the, in the last paragraph of what I drafted, or the second to last, really the, with the meat of it, I did say that access is via Sagamore Farm Road and that we have an existing, the town has an existing easement over Chip Lait's property that is just to access the solar farm and maintain it and install it. That said, I have had discussions with Chip on again and off again over the last couple of years since I've been to Camden. He's certainly willing to, you know, work with the town on, on doing something with that access if that needs to happen. I'm confident that Sagamore Farm Road could actually work. An appropriate location. I will say that Gartley and Dorsky has done some vernal pool assessments on, on that property because there's some significant wetland when you come up at the end of Sagamore Farm Road. Mind you, these are all, and this is not diminishing what a wetland is and the functions that they provide because man-made wetlands provide a lot of function. But the wetlands that are up there that we're talking about are man-made over the course of years of the town using that property. And, you know, we've dug, and I don't know who we is, you know, it's hard to say. But there are dug areas where trails were at or Wold's Woods roads. You know, and there were culverts in certain locations that were either removed and, you know, filled in. And so there's all, there's some wetland issues up there from a permitting perspective. But I did just get last week from the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife that they have determined that those wetland vernal pools are not actually significant wildlife habitat. And that is a, that's a pretty significant thing when you're talking about trying to develop a site. If, if that was determined to be a significant wildlife habitat. And so what IFNW and DEP does, their biologists go in and they, they review what a consultant submits, and you have to count egg masses of spotted salamanders and fairy shrimp and all these kinds of things at a very specific time of the year. It's like late April to the second week of May. They have like two or three or four weeks to, you know, go out and, and kind of count egg masses in these wetlands. And then-
Jeremy, I, I, I think we're getting into the weeds a little bit. I don't think we need to go that deep into it.
Okay, but let me just say that those, I figured Allison would appreciate that. Those wetlands are not significant wildlife habitats. So that, just from my perspective and from a developer's perspective, the ability to put a road continuing from Sagamore Farm Road up in is a lot more doable and a lot more feasible.
Okay.
Allison?
I know nobody else is gonna like this because it's just taking Jeremy's bait and getting into the weeds that nobody else wants to get into. But are you saying the upper, I totally agree with that assessment for the lower part, right near the road? But are you, they said none of the vernal pools or wetlands in the, on the whole property?
Why don't, why don't I send, I can send you, and I can ask, why don't I put it on our, the town's, I can try to put it on the town's website? Because I think it's an important document if you want me to, otherwise I can send it to you, Allison.
Why don't you just send it to me? And then, I mean, I just-
It's public document, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, by all means, send it to whoever wants it, but I'm, it's-
I'll send it to you.
Seems a little bit, I don't know.
I think the, yeah, good, I think I should try to get it out. Jeremy, what, what do you- The vernal pool study, the survey, the information we're discussing here just lightly, from the questions you've had, really, to my mind, you know, is, is information that a person who's interested in expressing interest in something kind of needs to know.
For sure.
And, and I think is that I, what I've seen done in the past, and rather than wordsmithing, uh, you know, a one-page request of interest for seventy-seven acres, that we would request it, individual interested to, uh, um, you know, meet with you and or the town to go over the elements and questions they may have before they express their interest. Because you, I fear if you send this out, um, it's, it's not, unless you feel strongly that there's three or four who are gonna respond no matter what. Uh, that just, it's just a formality.
I do.
Okay.
Feel that way, Bob.
Okay, because that's the way it reads.
I, I will say the survey, I can hold off on, on this for, you know, again, the survey's gonna be done, and the wetland information is done, at least on the significant vernal pools in the area that we were talking about, about accessing the road access to the site.
Oh, okay.
So that's done. I, I can wait until this is out, until I have the survey, and then I can attach the survey with it, Bob.
Yeah, anything like that. To me, uh, looking at it as from a developer perspective, we're gonna look for the, um, the relevance in, in the, in the field. Again, it's all moot if we have three or four or five entities that are interested, just need a, a formal expression to raise their hand. That's a different story. But otherwise, I get into wordsmithing, because I, when I read, um, if a developer is interested, a party proposes and designs a financially sound project, will consider rezoning. Nobody is going to design a project before. So there's a little wordsmithing that has to go on in parallel with that.
I get that.
Yeah, but that's important to a developer. They're not gonna go very far other than, you know, listening and reading documents at this stage. But.
All right.
Survey is important.
That's fair.
Allison.
Yeah, I guess I would like to just hold off on it a tiny bit because, um, you know, we've been waiting for this survey for so long. There were some things that just as a, as a town, as a board, I think we need to have really clear before something goes out. And, um, you know, maybe there's gonna be something in the survey that one of, you know, surprises some of us or all of us or the wetland stuff. And, um, I'd just like to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page before we have to inevitably start asking, you know, answering questions about it. And that, you know, some of the possible wordsmithing of the document. So, um. I, I am happy to see progress being made, and I, you know, I'm happy to have the word out that, you know, we're open to ideas and people can kind of start mulling it over, um, those who may not have had knowledge that the site could ever be available. Just before actually releasing it. Also, the water company, um, one thing that's been a great concern to me for a while is, um, getting to the bottom of this agreement that does or does not exist with the water company. One of the logical places for a road to continue would be right where that water tank is. And, um, you know, Main Water was, uh, maintaining that road to a certain extent. I don't know what the town ever got in return for having that tank there, if we could obligate them to remove it. It's not, it's an inconvenient.
Right.
We'll work on that too.
Know the actual facts about that rather than.
Yeah, I think it's a good one too. But I, I think, Jeremy, none of these comments should, um, not take away the emphasis. I've, I've always heard that we're very interested forward with this. We know, I know, we do have people in the wings who are very interested. This is a good way to have a, so that everybody knows that we're gonna be proceeding with something. Will the survey be ready by the twentieth, by our next meeting?
Like I said to Allison earlier, I, I think it's probably ready this week, Bob, but I, I'll call Jim Dorsky tomorrow, um, and see really if, if that can be available. I would like, um, to, at least within the next month, Bob, um, try to bring this back to you guys with the wetland information. I can work on the water company agreement and find out really what the facts are behind that. I'll work with Bill Kelly on that, just to keep this moving. Because I know, you know, as it is, if you're a developer and you're, you're looking at something, um, the longer it takes to get out there, um, the more.
I agree. I agree.
More challenging pulling that project is.
I think we gotta agree. Time is of the essence, Jeremy.
Okay. So I'll work on either next, the twentieth, or the week after that, Bob.
Oh, great.
Thank, thank you, Jeremy. I think it's great, and I think we're real close.
Yep.
I think so too. Um, onto our, um, the special items that remain, at least. We have the first one, and I'm not sure, this is about the, in our packet, there's some guidelines that have been drafted for, uh, safety and discussion of Halloween per Maine CDC guidelines. I'm not sure without Audrey being here, where to go with this. Anybody? Allison, do you have any ideas?
Um, well, some of it came out of a conversation that we've been having with, um, Pearl Street residents and the discussion about whether, um, uh, we would be closing the street as we normally do, um, for the trick-or-treating event. A few Pearl Street residents reached out to the town, and I know Audra reached out to, um, some other towns in the city of Belfast to see what different places are doing. Um, I think everybody agrees, it just doesn't make sense to close down a street and encourage a massive gathering of candy exchange during a pandemic. But I think people are looking to guidance, looking for guidance from the town, um, to a certain extent on what is being encouraged and what isn't. And so, um, the thought was that we can, uh, share, you know, what the state recommendations are. I know Mark's been following this a little bit too, and maybe has more to add.
I, I, as I think Allison's has, we, we've been contacted by people going frustrated because Halloween is really important for the kids, especially the younger kids. And, you know, there've been questions about, is, is there something the town can do? And I've been thinking about it. Um, years ago, when my son went to People Place, they used to have what they called trunk or treat, where, you know, families would go and dress up the kids and maybe design the back of the car, open up the trunks and hand candy out as the kids went around the circle. Now, it, the, the recommendations we have say that's not really a good idea. But I was thinking about, is there something we could do as the town? Um, obviously Pearl Street is not gonna be closed down, um, that's not recommended. And I was thinking, I was looking, driving by the snowbowl today, and I thought about what an ex, if we, the town could coordinate an expanded trunk or treat, so maybe have, maybe a dozen stations around the perimeter of the parking lot and have people driving with their kids and maybe have a way of delivering each, they could each stop and they could get maybe through a pipe, get a couple pieces of candy given through, maybe the town delivered, and then they can cycle out and, and leave. And I, I was thinking, you know, that's something we perhaps could possibly do, which it could be safe, you know, it would be unique, and we have the, the, we have the place where we could do it. And I wanted to put that out there and see if that's something we could put together. It would take some, uh, town people to sort of work on it and coordinate it, maybe, uh, Dave, maybe, you know, coordinating, uh, some stops, um, you know, maybe using some of the, uh, each stop, trunks could be some of the town vehicles or something, just to do something for the kids. I think it wouldn't be that hard to do, and I think it might be a great thing. So I wanted to throw that out there and see what people think.
Actually, Allison, you have something?
Um, I, a lot of, I, the trunk or treat thing might be good. I don't, I don't, it would be kind of good to see what other places are doing. I'm a little nervous about the town being in charge of something like that, but, um, um, I personally always wanted to do a haunted house at the transfer station. Um, but, uh, or maybe even the opera, like some town property, we could do like a haunted kind of thing. But, um, that might not be a good idea either, I don't know. But I, it is a good opportunity for people just to stay in their own neighborhood. Um, and I know that growing up in Camden, uh, a lot of people really enjoyed the neighborhood aspect of Halloween. And I've heard over the years, a lot of people kind of lamenting the fact that they don't get trick-or-treaters anymore because everybody just goes to Pearl Street. And, uh, so having neighborhoods talk to each other and figure out what, you know, they're comfortable with, um.
I would agree.
I don't know. I think it's a ni- it's a nice time to like really encourage people to, to freak out to their own neighborhood and figure something out. Maybe there could be some kind of system where you can put, you know, a, a light on in a certain way if you're like.
Right.
I don't know. Candy or.
Taylor.
Um, I've been thinking about this a lot over the last, um, few weeks, and I really think Allison, the sentiment that you just had kind of hits the nail on the head. Um, the, the, I grew up on Pearl Street, and Pearl Street didn't always used to be the, the massive, um, event that it is today. It's always popular, but, um, the, what we have in normal years is great, but it draws a significant amount of people from outside of Camden even that come specifically to Pearl Street, and it's quite a gathering. And I think that the headline, from my perspective, that we're putting out there is that we're not encouraging an event this year in Pearl Street. And I don't think that we probably should do it for other neighborhoods either, but I like the idea that maybe we go, you know, for this year at least, go back to the, the.
More standard.
Yeah, a little more simpler times when you just kind of stay close to home and maybe hit your neighbors up, you know, some. It feels a little more responsible to me.
Well, especially if people are very familiar with their neighbors and, and who they are, and rather than, you know, something, you know. I encourage, you know, Audrey's not unfortunately out here this evening, but I think we encourage any ideas. We gotta get them to Audrey ASAP. Other ideas, but I think to, to foster the idea, which our guidelines, I think, do foster the idea of, uh, more, more neighborhood, more Camden-only kind of a, of a thing for those, uh, homes that will be open and those that won't. Because I agree with Allison, unless you have a, I know down in, um, Rockland, Massachusetts, they have a, a blue light system, which, uh, they have a blue light in the house anywhere, which means we're open for business. If there's not a blue light anywhere and around the house, nobody goes there. Um, we have to develop some of those things. Neighborhoods have to develop. A lot of people are gonna be black. A lot of people will want to be entertaining, uh, children coming to the door, um, for whatever reason, even with masks, but that's their decision.
Could we close other street? We have since the pandemic, we have agreed to like some of the neighborhood block parties that they still, um, were doing. If, you know, there might be some kind of opportunity to.
Perhaps.
Individual neighborhoods wanted to close portions of their street, we might be able to entertain that kind of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not an expert on what Maine CDC has, you know, stipulated here, so I would imagine they've addressed some of those things in their guidelines about parties and haunted houses and that kind of thing. But, um, I guess the best thing we can do is, uh, Jess, well, is this gonna be posted on the website, these guidelines?
I can do that tomorrow, yes.
Um, uh, at least, you know, you all have talked about posting these guidelines on the website, whatever information we have so that individuals can start seeing some of this. This is just a guideline that's been crafted, but it's not been published anywhere. Is that correct?
As I know, yeah. I've only seen what Audrey's put in the packet for you, so.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, we're a little hamstrung, but I think, uh, I think we should just, uh, um, talk to Audrey tomorrow uh, on any ideas and, and, and improvements, because we, we've gotta get something on the website, the sooner the better. Because Halloween's not that far away. Uh, and the twentieth for us is too late, I, I think.
Can we, can we post this? Um, if this is the document that's in the packet, at least, this one-page document?
Yes.
Okay. I think it would be good to at least get that up on the website and share it. Because I'm sure there's people that still just don't know what the plan is, or that there isn't a plan.
Pearl Street or whatever.
This Halloween, like there usually is.
Yeah, Jess, would you talk to, um?
Yeah. I'll talk to Audrey in the morning, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Another challenge these days that, um, not fun. The other item on our discussion here is, we, we had discussed this before, and Audrey crafted a Camden, uh, priority survey and committee survey that she had sent to us for comment, and I did comment to her, and I'm sure some of you did, um, about this idea of putting something with or around or to the, with the ballot for soliciting some input on, well, resident priorities and or canvassing, uh, for, uh, committee, um, um, interest, not interest, but, um, for both current members of committees and those who have not been members of committees for more helping us down that line, which we discussed last time about, you know, the, um, the combination of committees and, um, and, uh, task, task forces, task groups. I know, um, I, I have a pretty strong opinion about the priority survey, but I wanted to listen to, um, the, uh, the other Select Board members to see what your feelings were about first, the priority survey that Audrey crafted, which was very creative, extremely creative. I loved the way it was set up, but, uh, comments, fellow board members?
Are we just on the committee part?
No, priority survey first.
Oh.
Allison.
I mean, I thought a lot of it was, was great, um, but you just have to be so careful about what you ask people and how you ask them. Um, and that, I, I guess at this point, I would rather try to focus on asking people things like, how would you like to receive information from the town? Where do you get your news? Do you want to be contacted by the town? Would you, you know, what's your contact information? Like some basic? Stuff like that. Um, I, I don't think the, the survey as it was put out, um, is ready to go. I think we're already at the point where we can't give it to, um, to all the voters. Like it can't be included in the, in the envelope with the ballot. So some of the, the benefits of being able to reach that whole demographic, um, you know, we've already been told we're not allowed to do it in the way that, um, would have been quick and easy. I think it's still kind of a work in.
Yep.
Progress.
Other comments on the priority? Mark?
Uh, I, I would hold off. Surveys, I, I think are dangerous. I think it's really well done, and I know that Audrey has a background in crafting surveys. She has an education in it. Um, but it, it's sort of, you know, asking, you know, sort of, asking people to do surveys, sort of either you're, you're looking for trouble, um, you know, because people don't have the knowledge they have to really put down the, the answer that may best help the town, or you're sort of looking for pointing them in the direction the answer you want. You know, surveys, I think, can be dangerous in that way. I think Allison is right. It's too late to get everybody. And if we don't get everybody, then we shouldn't try to get, you know, most people, because I don't think that's fair. Once the, the ballots went out without the survey, I don't think it's fair to include it with some of the surveys.
Yeah, I agree. I, I love the idea of doing this, and, um, I do think that we're on the right track with a lot of these questions. I, you know, I, I feel like I would rather try to do something like shooting for the April tax bill or something like that, and taking some more time to really fine tune, um, what this is. Because I don't think there's necessarily a sense of urgency to make it happen for November. I'd rather see it done right and wait a few months.
Yeah.
But it, I, I love the way that it's going.
That was my comments to Audrey. I mimicked all, all three of you, um, with some more information because I don't like asking questions they don't want the answer to. Um, uh, in some cases, uh, the way it's crafted, it's like, you know, I can prioritize this stuff, but you can use, it could be used as a bat to hit you over the head for whatever reason downstream is not done. Or perhaps financial reasons or logistical reasons, but, so it needs to be worked on in, in parallel with when we do it. And I think here, I think I'd agree. I would, I would table it for the moment. I, I noticed in the, um, there's no, the committee survey's not in the packet, um, yet we refer to committee survey on the, um, on the agenda. I do recall it, because I did see it, and I did like it very much. I think it's a great start for, uh, surveying, um, uh, people with, uh, it follows on our conversations I mentioned about the, uh, task force versus, uh, in addition to committees and that kind of thing. But, um, we can, I, that, that was not intended to be on a, related to the ballot, as I recall. That was related to just information in the town. And I, I think it's a great first step. And I think we need to get comments from all of us to Audrey on that committee survey so we can, you know, get it ready to, to utilize as a tool to reinforce the tremendous amount of knowledge that lives in our time of Camden. Uh, whether we, I don't think we tapped the surface of that. Allison?
Yeah, I mean, I thought she did a really good job with that as a as a first draft that she just whipped up. I think the committee survey stuff is close to ready to go. That maybe it just needs a little bit more in terms of collecting information about people that are not already participating, that, you know, it's a it's a responsive survey, so you get different questions based on whether you answer that you are already a part of a committee or you're not. But the idea of trying to have a database of the different types of skills that we have in town that may or may not be related to a certain committee, but just, you know, people being able to say, I'm I'm an architect and I'm willing to, you know, review plans or this or that is something that I would really like to try to capture. And we obviously need Audrey to be a part of.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should put full speed ahead and help in any way we can to get it to that point. But I love the way it was a decision matrix. Are you a member? Are you a committee member now or not? You know, and but what was missing, one thing, and I talked to Audrey about it, that was the, you know, what areas of interest you have, what areas capability, to help us to build some, well, not, I hate to call it database, but informational base on on resources. When we have a specialty thing, like we just give a broadband, like we have a specialty, something else, and that they're going to constantly come up as we as we go forward and and may not fit in a specific niche of existing committees.
Arts that will do a mural or.
Exactly. I would hope we could get the survey, you know, ready, rolling into this year. We don't, that's not a lot of time, by the way, but but I think we can. I think we can get that done. So if you have any comments, individuals, get emailed to to Audrey and we can we can hit it again going forward. But I'm hearing total support for committee survey activity. The second to the last thing we have is the discussion approval, actually for discussion on the request for proposal for proposals for Seven Willow Street, which is the, as you learn from the individual, you probably may not remember, Seven Willow Street is a is a foreclosed property that Town of Camden does control on Willow Street, obviously, and it has been abandoned for a long time. It's a great location, blah, 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 and we should proceed on that. Question to the board, Audrey's not here and she's been the focal point of this whole discussion. Not that you haven't been, Jeremy, is not the point, but I feel a little reticent to have this discussion without her here. Opinions? Alison?
Yeah, I definitely would want Audrey to be a part of it, but I think maybe one thing that would be helpful to Audrey is just to get sort of confirmation from us on her sense had been, and I think mine is too, and many of ours, is that we would want to use that property as an opportunity to advance some of the other town goals that we have, such as, you know, an increase in access to affordable housing and things of that nature. So to just put it out there that we are not looking to to put that property out to like a highest bidder with no other stipulations kind of scenario that we would be taking into consideration or strongly weighing, you know, the the ultimate use of the property and how that fits into town goals, not just a monetary highest bidder kind of situation.
Yep. Taylor, you had it first.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I was going to frame it that I think we have an obligation to go down that route, considering all the discussions we've had about housing affordability and how often do we have the opportunity where we actually control a property and we could direct it like that. So I think that that absolutely needs to be the direction that we go in that, you know, again, given our careers, we have an obligation to do our best to make sure that that becomes a some sort of support for improving our housing stock for in an affordable way.
Jeremy, you had your hand in second.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, if you read that memo, I mean, it kind of said exactly what what you're discussing here. You know, there's towns do this, right? You have the right to to do away with that property as the select board sees fit. That said, you know, that memo did discuss this other issue of affordable housing and how important that is in town. And I want to let you know that we do have, you know, Habitat has expressed an interest in the property already, but I just wanted to share that. And there have been some other groups working kind of in behind the scenes on trying to do some other affordable housing in town. So there is some interest out there and I I I just wanted to let you know that we're not thinking about that and Audrey and I are, I mean, this is kind of where we're coming from when when, you know, we're discussing what to do with properties like this.
But I think the big question was, just so to clarify, is 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 the recommendation here or request of expressions of interest or request for bids?
Well, because normally, Bob, and I I've researched this and I I did a lot of this when I was in Bangor, because we ended up foreclosing on a lot of properties for for back taxes. You know, lots of towns just go the request for bids and that turns into a, you know, some people, you start with a minimum bid and and you can go from there. And that's all that it is. There are communities, not many of them in Maine, especially on the midcoast, you know, look at it a little differently and say, you know, we we control the property, exactly what Alison's saying, we control the property, we have a an issue with affordable housing, workforce housing in the midcoast, and that's really from Kittery to Bar Harbor. It's not unique to Camden. And it's something needs to be done on the state level, clearly.
Okay.
We could provide, you know, put affordable housing covenants on the property that maintain its affordability over time. That's doable. So Audrey and I are thinking about all of these things and I would prefer to go that route and I think Audrey would be too to dive into that a little more rather than doing a request for bids.
Mark, Mark?
My question for, and Jeremy sort of answered it, I would like us to see go the Habitat for Humanity route or some other organization like that. My my question was, I've often seen Habitat for Humanity build new houses. I don't know if, when I look at this house, it looks like there's a lot of renovation and I didn't know if they did that kind of work. If they do, that's the direction I would like to I would like to move in.
They do. They do do that work, Mark.
Alison?
So initially I was hesitant to vote on anything or officially move forward without Audrey here, but I also don't want to be the, something that slows it down. So maybe if we were to just officially encourage, you know, Audrey and other staff or whoever to to move forward with, you know, advertising in a way that, you know, really, however they they see fit without without making any.
Financial commitment.
You know, any kind of commitments, but to start collecting proposals or options that we can review later.
Bob, from a, from, and I think that's very appropriate, Alison, and I'm just thinking now, putting my building in kind of CEO hat on, building has gone many years unheated. And the more and more and more that buildings go unheated, the foundations start to really, you know, begin to fail. And right now, Steve thinks, and I've I've been in it, I mean, the bones of this building are pretty good. Certainly there are some issues in the property, you know. That said, the bones are good, but if you keep going another winter and another winter and another winter like this, soon salvaging that building is not going to be doable. A demo. And I don't think that's a demo is what anyone wants.
So what we're really talking about here is, and I'm hearing a a strong leaning towards expressions of interest, not bids, not financial, and I think that's a smart move. Yet we have interested parties, let's talk with them, find out what they're thinking about and we can go on to step two and step three after that. Good?
I would agree with that.
Yep, good. Lastly, select, well, we don't have any town reports, we don't have any town manager this evening to report. I know she did have some things, but.
Well, we, Janice is here. She's our assistant town manager. Janice, do you have something?
I don't.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, Taylor, do you have anything you wanted to?
No.
Okay. Alison, how about you?
Um, yeah, one of the things that Audrey and I had had talked about was this update from the group that's working on the skate park. And I think they had sent that to Audrey initially, but they've sent it to me and I could give that update briefly if that's okay with you. Okay, it really maybe should have been one of public comments. So Rafi is heading up a good part of the skate park group. So as usual, he's prepared something very graphically pleasing. I think their intention is just to try to make sure that the select board is up to date on everything that they've been doing. So I'm just going to really quickly read this. Thank you, select board. Since the vote of select board on August 18th to keep the skate park and temporarily move it to the Norton Street parking lot, much has happened. A community team has come together to look at options, both short term and long term for this important asset to our town. Our first priority was to determine what components of the old skate park were salvageable. After consultation with an individual who has been involved with the restoration of other skate parks, we decided the half pipe could be saved. We wanted to be good stewards of the parking lot and organized a community cleanup day. This was a great success. Not only were we able to push the pieces into position for the half pipe and begin to level them, but we began work beautifying the lot. This included painting the perimeter fence, hedging the bushes, throwing out trash in the shed and sweeping up. Every weekend since then, members of the community have been volunteering to continue to make improvements. Local stores have offered to help financially. The Rotary Club has volunteered hours. And most importantly, the skating community has been so grateful that there is a place for them to go. At this point, we are at a crossroads. Due to the age of the structure, we have determined that we need to purchase a new layer of plywood before we can add the final skating surface material that Rick Seibel saved during the demolition. While we understand there is no commitment of the Norton Street lot being a permanent home for the half pipe, we would like to invest this money now in materials that will be reusable wherever the skate park is eventually located. Cody Hanson has set up an account for us to put any fundraising proceeds. However, before we begin asking folks for donations, we would like some clarity from the select board if this is inside the scope of what you intended in relocating the skate park and if we may proceed to raise money. We would further like to make a request from the Town of Camden for $500 from COVID relief funds. And I think that that was maybe the COVID relief funds part of it is just a suggestion if that were possible. It might not be an allowable expense for that, but a request from the Town of Camden for $500 in funds to buy some smaller skating elements for kids to use in the meantime. At the moment, kids are creating their own structures to skate on. Thank you for your consideration. And just to give everybody a little bit of context, I'm going to try to scroll through the pictures a little bit. It really has been, it's been really impressive to see the amount of work that they've been able to get done. There's this, it looks so much nicer there. There's that, and I can send this to everybody.
Yeah, please do.
So that shows the the half pipe. But I also have started to get, I don't know if anybody else has, but there's there's been a lot more skateboarders around town, not contained to the skateboarding area. And it reminded me of back when I was in high school and there was a deficit of not having a real skate park and how skateboard, they, I mean, they were on the post office, Village Green, they were everywhere. And so with without one, it's been noticeable to see a little bit more. But I didn't know if every, I I think they had already started to fundraise and that Audrey had already allowed that. I don't know if you think it's appropriate, Bob, for us to.
Well, first of all, we're not going to discuss it during select board reports, but I think it was appropriate, it's not appropriate, is that we need to bring the skateboard discussion back to a select board's agenda item. And not the least of which, remember, the last action we had coming out of the last meeting was that the town staff, Audrey and company would come back with recommendations to us for the location of the skateboard. This, all this other information is new and peripheral, so we we can, we should bring it to a head at a at a select board agenda item, including all of the funding and all of those pieces.
What? Did you, I mean, I don't, I think we had agreed to have it temporarily relocated to the parking lot.
We agreed to move it to the parking lot, period. That's what we agreed to, to acquire it and move it to the parking lot. That's all we've agreed to today. So anyway.
I think, yeah, it's 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 clear that not having Audrey here is going to be a an issue, but I don't, I I hope we're not about to leave a negative feeling.
I don't, I never see a reason why we would. We're just, I'm just talking the facts of what the select board has agreed to today. I don't think anybody at select was opposed to a skate park or 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 building it and fundraising it. It's just that how we do it. And we should bring it to an agenda item ASAP to, you know, decide. I'm hoping that Audrey could answer when we're going to have the recommendations for where the skate park should be relocated to so we can make that decision next with the other, any any other elements to it, because I think a lot of people are asking questions about where it's going to, they've asked me about where it's going to be and I don't have that answer. At this point, none of us do. So I think it's an absolute action item. It's not meant of negativity. It's meant of fact, that's all. All right. Anything else, Alison?
No.
Mark?
I have a number of things. First off, the Conservation Commission is one of the, is is one of the the groups that's required for the town to have. And of course, we had our membership drop off. There have been a couple of people that have expressed interest in in joining the a a new Conservation Commission. So as people watching, listening to this, if you'd be interested in joining the Conservation Commission, please, you know, approach the town office and get an application. We would love to to invite you to do that. Today, the design team had their 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 monthly meeting and a lot came out of it. First thing, and and Dave St. Laurent will will back this up. He's working with MDOT on the Route One Drainage Improvement Project and they have said that they're ready to start on, I believe he said, October 15th, which is coming up quickly. And so, you know, if we should make people aware that this is, he's going to have a meeting with him to get final details next week, I guess. But that is coming and that'll be working on, I guess, from, you know, from downtown, midway through downtown, all the way up to the stop and go. And so there'll be some disruption in town, but they plan for that. And also out of the meeting, as the Mechanic Street parking lot has been finished with the paving, Garden Club has done some great planting there and designing some plantings. It'll take some time to grow up, but they've been working on a a native plant garden. And that that has been worked. So that's a a great addition. Also, for the mural for the wall, the timeline now is the person that's going to donate it much of the time and and the paint is prepared to do it. It looks like in early spring at this point. If there's an opportunity before that, we may see it, but that's coming. And then one last thing that Dave mentioned during the design team meeting is now we've pretty much finished with the street light. The street lights have changed. They're all LEDs. And just to give you an idea of what that accomplished between the decorative downtown lights and the street lights, 335 lights have been changed to LEDs. That's quite an accomplishment. They're also workable. If you live by a street light and it's too light or it's it's dim or too bright, they can be adjusted. So please, you know, contact the town office if you'd like to see some changes in your lights. Two last things. If you've been paying attention, I pay attention very closely every week. We have had some very increased growth in our COVID cases in Knox County. Right now, we have 13 active cases. There were two more today. There's been one pretty much added in every week. So we we were at two active cases in town for three or four, in Knox County for three or four months. And we've had a a big spread. And of course, you saw that, a lot of people saw it affected the eighth grade at the middle school. Last week, a sports event at the high school had to be canceled because somebody that was involved came down with a positive. Last week, a sports event at the high school had to be canceled because somebody that was involved came down with a positive test, so that had to be changed. All I say is, please don't let up, please be careful, hand washing, masks, distancing are very important right now, especially with this, this growth of, of that. And then the last thing, I wanted to talk to Jeremy and Audra and everyone else about this. I, as well as everyone else, have been looking at the town and realizing that this has been a very difficult time for our business owners. We've had a number that have closed up, either some have retired, some financially had to go, some are moving out of town, all different reasons. But we have a bunch of open storefronts, and at the same time, if you've been paying attention to real estate values, real estate values have gone up because there are a tremendous amount of people interested in moving here. We have a great school system, we have a beautiful town, and as people have learned that they don't need to be going to offices anymore and they can work remotely, we have had more people moving here. So as we have a more viable, full-time community, if there's a way to encourage the business community people to look at our empty storefronts and, and come up with, you know, what would make sense to fill these storefronts up with? I'd like to, you know, everybody in town to sort of think about, what would make sense? Let's keep this town as viable and as interesting and unique as it has been for all these years. I'd like to help the business people however we can. So anybody with any ideas, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you, Mark, thank you very much.
And, and the one last thing I'll say is, and totally in support of fundraising for the skate park, and totally in support of finding a permanent home for it in Camden.
Good, thank you, Mark. I agree with everything you said, lots of challenges lying ahead. I don't have anything specific, I was trying to find out when the, some of the project stuff was going to start on Route One, nor, I haven't heard a word on that one. I'm hoping to have it by next time. Anyway, with that, motion to adjourn?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Discussion, roll call, Allison?
Hi.
Mark?
Uh, the magic eight ball says signs point to yes, so yes.
Thanks. Taylor?
Hi.
Bye-bye. Thank you all very much, thank you, Jeremy, thank you, Dave. Have a good one, we'll be talking soon, I'm sure. Ciao.
Buddy, thanks.